I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to take a roll call first?
Yes. Mr. Henderson?
Here.
Mr. Duco?
Here.
Mr. Hendricks?
Here.
Mr. Rowley?
Here.
Citizens of Leitonia, before we start this meeting, had a tragedy this last week or two. District would like to extend our hearts and our prayers and our thoughts to Todd, Garrett, and Carson. It would be sadly missed, and if we could all just take a moment of silence and think about them.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. Would like to move into the treasurer's report.
For the month, we had the bills accounts payable, financial reports, which include the board reports. The donations we had were $100 from the VFW for golf, $50 from Mrs. Perkins for the Perkins Tor Tora Scholarship, 250 from Michael and Tracy Henderson for the Board of Education Fellowship Fund. The financial items we will be approving are the renewal of a one-year contract with Nutrition Group for the 15, 16 school year, the creation of the workers' compensation fund, transfers from the classroom facilities fund to the PI fund, the Rotary Fund to the general fund, the general fund to the cafeteria fund, as well as the classroom facilities fund to the Rotary Fund, and the Rotary Fund, excuse me, of closing them out. We need to approve the following transfers to the general fund for the sports of girls' basketball, track, baseball, volleyball, softball, golf, cross-country, and soccer. We will also be approving Shaakely Uniservice as MCO for workers' comp for fiscal year 16, and we need to approve the supplemental budgets for both girls and boys varsity basketball. Also in the packet is the attached resolution for the renewal of the emergency levy and return of advances to the general fund from the high school principal fund and yearbook fund. And I have two appropriations to close out for fiscal year 15 for the 300 account, which is athletics, the district agency fund, as well as the straight A grant fund, and the temporary appropriations for fiscal year 16. There's a lot there.
All right, motion.
Second. Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. On the, first of all, can we get a copy of the supplemental budgets? I didn't see a copy of that, so I'd like to have a copy of those two budgets.
Okay.
On the transfer from the general fund, Jennifer, when I looked last year, we transferred over 10K, you know, 10,000, now it's 21. Could you know the main difference off, you know, why it's so much more this year than last year?
Well, I know soccer was a lot higher than it was the previous year. Baseball, they ordered uniforms this year, so their expenses were a little bit higher as well. I don't see anything else. Now, the girls' basketball fund is more, it has a deeper deficit than they did last year as well.
So does that mean they, technically, they didn't generate enough revenue?
That is correct.
Ticket sales.
That is correct. They have ticket sales, and they also have revenue from the programs that are sold, the ads and the programs at the games.
Okay. And on the football fundraiser, did that go through you?
No. The, I am still trying to get the football supplemental budget approved, and that would be on that.
That would be on there.
Mm-hmm.
And actually, do they sure even though it was in kids?
Technically, yes.
Okay.
Yes, because the original supplemental budget approved last year does not have it on there, because it was Matt's supplemental.
But you didn't pay any of the expenses, and none of the revenue came through you?
All of the revenue, most of the revenue came through us, and the only expense we paid out was the usage of the golf tournament place. I'll make a couple of notes here. The classroom facilities fund is the fund that a, was originally the building of the grounds of this building, so we are finally closing it out after 14 years. So that will be off of our books. The Rotary Fund I'm closing out as well, because we don't use that fund anymore, and it was actually used last year, the previous year, to help with the concession stands, so I'm going to just close that fund out as well. We don't, we don't need that anymore. So that's mostly what these transfers are, is moving the money to close out the fund. The MCO for workers' comp, we usually approve this in September, however, we are now going to prospective billing for workers' compensation, where we'll be paying in advance instead of in arrears, so we will, we are approving them earlier than we usually do. Let's see, and you guys got the renewal for the emergency levy, which will be placed on the ballot in November of this year.
What's the date? What's the date?
I believe it's the latest date.
That you can approve it until the one?
Well, there's a, there's a process that has to be done. The first approval here is the approving the board, that it's necessary, that we need to do the resolution. The next step for me is I have to contact the county auditor to get the millage for the levy. Once that millage is given to me, then next month, we'll have to approve that that is what we will be putting on the ballot. Once that's approved, then it goes to the Board of Elections to be put on the ballot, and it has to be to the Board of Elections by August 4, I believe. This is the date.
So this is to give you the go-ahead to pursue that?
That's correct.
Any further discussions? Jennifer, roll call.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes. All right, moving away from the treasurer's report, Lisa? Lisa moving into public participation?
No. She may be signed up. I didn't know who was going to go.
I think Lisa's checking.
I don't have anybody like.
Did anyone want to speak in front of the board? Okay. All right, leaving public participation, we'll go into old business. And I'll do the student achievement superintendent report together. Not much to report on. The governor will tonight sign the budget, from what all indications are, with his line item vetoes. The, come a long way, we don't know what's going to happen. We have an idea, but we start that process in February with six-county schools losing money, five-county schools losing money, and the proposal now would be that no school district loses money, so we'll see how that turns out tonight. Want to thank for that Representative Ginter for his relentless efforts to ensure funding for the rural schools and low population, and the factor, some of the factors in the formula that he has fought for. On the June 19th, I had the pleasure of going over to the Crestview Fine Arts, Mr. Ridgeway and the Votas, and it was great. They did second year, or third year they've done that, third year we've been over there. 55 students attended from Leitonia, Crestview, Columbianes, Palestine, Beaver, Salem, Unitah, and Heartland. 18 of the students were from Leitonia School District, we had the largest amount, contingency. And one of the coordinators of the academy, Kim Mayer, said she was grateful for the strong support and participation of Leitonia School District and students, and then she said, "Thank you for attending the performance." So it was a great camp, and the kids did a great job. We really enjoyed it, and I think Mr. Votaw and Mrs. Votaw and Mr. Ridgeway would concur with that. So now on to new business. Go ahead. New business? Okay, we are going to hereby move that the board adjourned to executive session for the purpose of considering the employment, appointment, and compensation of a public employee.
With the board and superintendent?
With the board and superintendent, treasurer present.
Action.
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 Action will be taken.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Roll call, okay. Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
It'll be short, right?
Yeah.
The action will be called.
Yep. Won't be long, guys.
I thought their hands would be with.
Yeah, so this math. I don't know. I'll think about it.
Not the worst thing I'm ever going to eat in my life, right?
We're having a committee discussion. Is it real table? We have two tables.
It's okay.
Just say, we just have a motion, we're just back out.
Yeah, okay. You just say, we, now, you were bringing us out of executive session, we are back, you know? Okay.
We are now leaving executive session and entering regular session. We have two changes, and it will be, first is 10A, and we're changing the percent to 3%. In 10D, we're going to shelve this until the next meeting. Okay. Back to the superintendent's report, just one thing. Ms. Mackenzie Graff got the board award scholarship, and she sent this to Mr. Rood and the school board, and she brought this in, almost didn't make it, it was a week and a half in her office, and I almost ate it, so you got it.
I don't need that. Thank you.
I think I left my glasses over there, so. 10A personnel. Motion.
Are you doing all of A?
I'm sorry, A, 1 through 6, thank you.
Motion for A 1 through 6.
Second. I'm sorry, I should have read it. Okay, I'll go through that. Sudy Jane and Ryan collapsed out for 3% raise on their current salary, effective August 1, 2015. We gave the 3% last year, and to be consistent with every, all the employees at 3% for the next year. Resignation of Kim Sokol and Lauren Markovich. Approved Tiffany Davis's summer school for a scheduled school year, as well as Chelsea Sauerwine, Jennifer Shar for the AM front door attendant, Lori Martston for the PM, and one-year contracts, Rayanne Cleal Arufa, if I said that right, and Arlene DeVivo and Andrew Morrow for halftime math.
So I made the motion.
Yeah, any questions? Discussion? Discussion?
The number 3, is that, is that reading?
Yes, it is.
Is that, is that, how many students are involved in that one?
One.
One student?
Correct, Mr. Ridgeway.
What is the, what's the cost, roughly? You don't have to be exact.
$20 an hour.
For eight hours.
For?
160, yeah.
Just $160?
Yeah.
Okay. And number 4, is that, what is that? Is that general tutoring? Is that?
That's the same, that's the same extended school year for a student on an IEP, and it's six hours for $20 an hour.
So on number 3, that June 22nd to July 16th, that's only, there's only eight hours in that whole time period? There's eight hours a day?
Go ahead, Ed, I'm sorry.
It's just one day a week.
One day a week, so it's $160 for one hour, one day a week.
One hour a day.
$20 an hour for one hour.
And on the halftime teacher, we, just wondering, if one of these days, it seems like more and more we need half-day teachers, I'm wondering if there's something we can do with benefits, because I'm always afraid you're going to lose those people, just because of insurance benefits, you know?
Yeah.
And it's really advantageous for us to have a half-day person, and I know you give them some title money, but boy, those benefits are.
Big.
Yeah, and that would be a reason they would leave, so.
Without a doubt.
It's just something to think about.
Yeah, we've talked about that Spanish, and we have possibilities for half-day teachers that come up every year at the high school, so that's a good thought.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
And I'd say Rayanne and Arlene are here today, so congratulations, welcome aboard. Rayanne comes from Howland, yeah, and she taught music and has done the play, and will do the same here, and we appreciate that. Very excited. She even called, she gave up a paycheck to come back early.
Awesome.
And Arlene comes from, she has quite diverse experience, from Moon Township in Pennsylvania, to Columbian, and to Heartland Christian, and she's going to do SAD and student council. So as soon as they got in, they wanted to get involved in the school right away, and that's what we're looking for. Andrew is also getting involved, he's coaching junior high football, and that's where he is tonight, so Andrew, so all three of the new teachers already have their feet on the ground, working on committees and supervising clubs, so thank you very much. 10B supplemental contracts, one, Rick Moders for Saturday School, two, Michelle Votaw for substitute coordinator for the teaching staff, and three, Jerry Bertilette for the substitute for the school bus, and I'll also put C in there, the substitutes, saying on the substitutes, the substitute teachers list for the school year, for the upcoming school year.
Motion.
Second. Discussion?
Have substitute teachers, have substitute teachers, and they, I didn't get a chance to look online, I don't know if the attachment was there or not, but do you ever break them down into who has their teaching certificate versus, are they broken out?
Yeah, and I'll tell you what, Michelle does a great job.
Okay. So the majority of them have their certificate, or the majority of them?
Majority, I believe, are temporary certificates. Am I wrong, or are they actually licensed teachers, Michelle?
We have many that have their permanent certificates. Then what we have, we also have some, like, my own is a five-year certificate, which will be up at the end of this year, and we have a couple that'll do long-term, and that's, in that certificate, certification, you can go one of two ways, short-term or long-term. For me, I have a short-term, it means I can do certain things, but if I wanted to be in Mrs. Duco's class for an extended period of time while she was out on leave, for whatever reason, I wouldn't do, I wouldn't be able to do that, would have to go and get someone who has that long-term certification. And on our lists, we have that, and we have what their specialty is, the date their license expires, and all of that.
How's the Saturday School monitor pick? Just to have volunteers? It's a supplemental, so it's Mr. Rudinsky, they apply, Mr. Rudinsky gives us the names, the high school principal. And what happens if that person can't be there? Somebody else told them? Yeah, they do a good job. Actually, Marsha is one of the coordinators, and she, they make a schedule. Like Michelle, Marsha's very organized as well, and they have a schedule, and they, they go four hours, and Cleon does it, and sometimes they'll go, they'll split it two and two, right? Sometimes you guys will divide it up and go two and two as well. Any further discussion? Jennifer, roll call.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
D is tabled, so we'll go to 10E, use of facilities, girls' basketball team for the gym for camp in June, boys' basketball team at camp at the same time in June, the Fire EMS to use the parking lot for training purposes in July, Mr. Rudinsky is going to use the auditoria for orientation on August 18th, National Honor Society to do the blood drive on August 31st, and Leitonia Bears are going to quad-county cheer-off on September 27th. It'll be at the football stadium, and then they found out a use position for the main gym in case it rained. Also, business and operations, approve the contract for the services for Columbian County ESC, the gifted program, the speech path, the speech path, and the school psychologist. And we have a list of textbooks that we had purchased for history, math, and middle school language arts. Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
The textbooks, the PI, the Building and Grounds Committee, they did some PI for computers, the outside grounds, as well as PI for books. The budget was $107,000, came in about $80,000 for new textbooks, a lot of computer, a lot of computer options with these textbooks, but we hadn't bought textbooks, we have rotation, we haven't bought new textbooks, science two or three years ago, but before that, it's been about eight years. As much as it's nice to have the computer and the access to the computer, it's always good to have something hard copy in your hand as well. The committees did a great job, hard work, to get those done and ready. Well, I think last week with our discussion, last month, when we opened it up, we had an array of teachers here, and I think the input was amazing. I think they really put their foot forward to the communication barrier with letting us know. You hear a lot of the constituents ask, "How come there's not a hard book coming home with them?" So I think this is a great start of the district's approach to that situation. Plus, when you look at F1, speech pathologists and the school psychologist, firsthand experience here, I think you have a lot of kids that fall through the cracks in a lot of school districts, and not just Leitonia, throughout the whole state, where you have children that perhaps aren't learning in a traditional way, and the ability for them to learn is there, and perhaps maybe, you know, whether it's an attention deficit, or dyslexia, or something like that, I think it's wonderful if we start saving some of these kids, instead of let them, letting, being pigeonholed into saying that they really can't achieve more with these two positions in particular, I think these specialists are going to be able to pull these kids out of that fray and give them an extra special chance to try to make something of themselves. And I think doing it at a younger age in elementary school, I think is crucial. And like I said, firsthand experience with our staff is amazing, teachers working with these two positions, and if we could reach out to the parents to get them into the fray and nip this in the bud and get these kids back on the right path of learning, I think we could see some really special results. Item 3, the Fire EMS training. Yes. When are you having lots of? You know what, I just talked to Russ about that today, and he was scheduling it.
The week after.
The week after, yeah, he was scheduling it this week, I know that.
The week after they're coming.
And a speech path and a psychologist, have we investigated, taken, are both those people busy? Is the five-day person busy? Five days for a full day? Yes. And actually, Mr. Ridgeway, I'll defer to him, five days, and you've also looked at other alternatives with some other companies to try to cut the cost. Higher, and the person doesn't cut the cost?
With a lot higher.
Really?
Almost double.
Okay.
What we pay for CSD.
Yeah, because I looked at the same thing at the time.
If you went to a bigger school and heard that some internally hired speech pathologists, they're on a different scale than teachers.
Yeah. Jennifer, roll.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, and G miscellaneous, and I left my glasses in the other room, Jen. This is for the STRS pickup, and it's, do you want to blow them?
Yeah. Yeah, and what it is, is STRS rate for employees is going up to 13% effective tomorrow, and we have to account for the pickup that some of our employees do have, so this is the resolution to account for the increase in the rate.
Motion. Second. Discussion?
With contractually obligated on that, it's right, I think I'm going to, something a lot of wiggle work.
Further discussion? Jennifer, roll.
Mr. Duco?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes.
Mr. Hendricks?
Yes.
Mr. Rowley?
Yes.
Okay, discussion items. We had talked about these in the June meeting, we had put them on the back burner, I'm sorry, at the May meeting. Two things that we were discussing were destination imagination, they gave a presentation to the school, and we also, Saturday School was something to discuss, which is also part of the manual that we tabled. As far as destination imagination, we talked about guidelines. We do have some Neola template guidelines for new activities. Basically, four steps, submit the required, the request with a purpose, a plan of preparation, and the costs, plus, you know, some kind of advisor. Two is to approve established, approve and establish a fiscal account, and then fiscal compliance, and then some type of operating procedures from the principal of the building, just kind of when they're going to meet, what's going on, what they can do, some general stuff, because they're a small school, a lot of students are involved in a lot of clubs, so you want to have some procedures that, you know, they may not be able to come to this event, and, you know, that can't be held against them if they're involved in a lot of activity, some procedures like that. So we had talked about going on to the policy committee, but I know how busy everybody is in the summer, so I was going to look for some directions. Do you want me to start those in July and then just bring them?
I mean, I asked you to put this on, Rob, and it's real quick, I mean, I thought we owed Mrs. Brockert response, I don't know if you remember that, but she basically gave it and suggested it.
Right.
And I know that someone suggested we start seating them with $200.
Right.
And that's where I wanted to get into administration guidelines. How do we determine that, and how do we decide that? Because there's a lot of other people doing a lot of other activities very similar to that. Sometimes we pay for a person to do it, some of our teachers are doing it on their own.
Right.
So I just wanted some type of guideline to maybe tie into fundraising too.
Okay.
Do you think there's a protocol in other districts to follow the platform? I don't know, but we have about four or five different ways that those organizations start here, right?
Yeah.
Maybe it would just be nice if we, instead of somebody comes and asks us, "Here's what we do," rather than, so.
And Neola has policy and guidelines, I can use that, and like you said, then go into the fundraisers, because that was another issue, fundraising is, has been discussed several times, and we keep going back to the same people for fundraisers. Now, we did talk about with the wellness committee, and I talked to Mr. Rudinsky and Mr. Ridgeway, that at the beginning of the year, the candy bar fundraisers, really, even though they say they're sold after school, you know what, it's better to get rid of them because they are sold during school. So it'd be best, and we've talked about that already, and, you know, we have some other fundraising concerns, like you said, especially when everybody's doing the same fundraiser, and they're all going for the same group for money, it becomes an issue, and just something to think about as well.
Would these be the same guidelines, like say if we start a speech group, or science club?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, yeah. Like, does the board want to put any money towards it? I would probably say no, but, you know, we might want to, something we may.
Then we'll put something in there.
I think you could write something up.
Yeah.
Submit it to us. Especially if it's a lower amount, like a $200, I mean, that probably worked. At Saturday School, Rob, I had asked you to. At Saturday School, Rob, I had asked you to talk about that. I wanted to talk about that last one, but really, I think we kind of addressed it with, it looks like in the handbook, there's progressive.
Yeah, they did a good job.
So we'll probably, we could probably cover that.
At the meeting.
In order to.
Yeah, and I thought that was nice. Mr. Ridginsky got some staff together. They did a great job, Mr. Ridginsky and the staff, working on that and kind of tidying that up a little bit because there was a little bit of leeway there. Thank you guys for doing that. Okay, we're on table.
Michael, any comments? No, sir. Jennifer.
Eric? One quick thing on the schedule. Sixth period, I was talking to Rob and I was showing him that we have a study hall and 32 students are in the study hall. And if you look, there are three electives offered that period. Very few, very few students in those classes, so. I know everyone said we don't have enough electives and if anyone has any ideas on what we could do better, but, I mean, we could hire a teacher and offer photography, but chances are that's not going to be efficient or cost-effective, so. I mean, the classes, there are some classes out there that it looks like we just need to get. And maybe when we go to 22 credits, we'll figure some, you know, we need to figure out a class, but.
Yeah, and that's a good point because when we went to the seventh period, that was brought up, what about electives? We have electives there that are being, and we didn't really lose any electives. Some will go in alternating years, like Mr. Ridgeway does, History of Rock and Roll, he does it every other year. So we can have that elective.
There's eight people signed up for that.
There's eight people?
There's electors with five kids in them, seven kids in them, nine kids in them.
Yeah.
So.
So, yeah, definitely a good point. And like I said, hopefully when we go, that class that goes to 22 credits, maybe that will inspire. And a study hall, I know that the, I know that the, in the past, Mrs. Mitchell's gone through the study halls and recruited kids to come into those classes too, so.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Not sure. Nope.
Did you hear your hand raised?
Go ahead.
I'm not sure if I can ask this, but are we able to share who that teacher is in the hall?
I don't know. What period is it?
I mean, there's only one.
Yeah.
There's one study hall.
I mean, one teacher for 32 kids.
Yeah.
That's a lot of kids. And in my experience, I've only been here this past year, I know that my kids have only been here this past year, but a lot of times they'll complain that they can't get things done in a study hall because it's too loud.
Well, I think if that's a concern, we could reach out to one of the universities and we could get a student teacher in here and not.
Or just address it with, address it with the staff.
There's a way we could be.
But 32, we have classes with 30, you know, 32 for a study hall. I know.
I think there's a couple staff members that can handle that too.
Yeah. I don't know who, I don't have a schedule in front of me, unfortunately. Yes?
I just have a thought from the personal experience as July, that may be partially changed. I know like from my experience, my personal experience, there's an active schedule. I think she has a study hall. That was my rule because she goes from school and, I mean, for any of the kids doing.
Allows her to catch her breath.
And when we went from eight periods to seven periods, that took that elective period away from my day. Do you know what I'm saying? So instead of doing an elective.
So you're happy about the study hall?
I think I have a study hall because I think, oh, but you know what I mean? Because their time after school was limited and I wanted them to have the time to get home with them. So I mean, I'm just saying that could be a possibility if July, the study halls are so full.
Yes, swell, yeah.